Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape Cod Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape Cod Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of the Selectmen. Today is Monday, September 7, 2022, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, firefighters' union, minimum shift staffing. As not to go into executive session, it could put the negotiations into jeopardy.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, by roll call.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zlonski, aye.
Taylor, aye. And we will return to open session at 7 o'clock. I would like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, November 7, 2022. It is 7 o'clock, and the Board is just returning from executive session whereby we unanimously approved a memorandum of agreement between the town of Falmouth and the local 1397 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, regarding the beginning, the shift-
Minimum.
Minimum shift staffing for the Falmouth Fire Department. So we are very happy. Mr. Johnson Staub, you've been working with the union on that for a while, and we're excited that we can move forward on that. So thank you for that. I would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask at this time that everyone please silence your cellphones and notify me as the chair, or if you are making a video or audio recording of this open-session meeting. The placement and operation of a recording piece of equipment should not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. Anyone else recording? Thank you, Noel. Okay. Proclamation. Ms. Scott Price.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native Americans, including the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe, Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, Aquina Wampanoag Tribe, have inhabited the land now known as the town of Falmouth, and many additional tribes, such as Quissett, have inhabited Cape Cod and the islands, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States, since time immemorial. And whereas American Indians, Alaskan natives, and Native Hawaiians are a special part of the tapestry of our nation's history, as keepers of a rich and ancient cultural heritage, Native Americans share with all of us the beauty of their art, the power of their songs, and the grace of their people. As individuals, they have distinguished themselves in virtually every field, from the arts to the sciences, from the world of sports to the world of commerce. And whereas November is recognized by the United States as Native American Heritage Month, and whereas we celebrate the culture and contributions of the first Americans to all areas of life, we also remember with sorrow the suffering they endure because of federal actions and policies that have long-term and often devastating consequences for Native Americans and their culture. Whereas, while we cannot erase the tragedies of the past, we can create a future where all people share America's great promise. The month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions of Native people. Native American Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the general public about tribes, to raise a general awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced, both historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges. Whereas, the Wampanoag Nation once included what is now the town of Falmouth, along with all of the southeastern Massachusetts and eastern Rhode Island, and we honor those who are still here and the sacrifices of those who are not. Whereas, while many communities no longer have the connection to their land's Native peoples, Falmouth is fortunate to have the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe, Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and Aquina Wampanoag Tribe still present to enrich Falmouth's diverse culture, invigorate our community, and strengthen our economy. Now therefore, the Falmouth Select Board does hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month, and we call on all residents of the town of Falmouth to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Well done. Recognition. Any recognitions from the Board?
I want to recognize that Friday is Veterans Day, and we'll be recognizing our Falmouth veterans on Main Street. I believe it's 10 o'clock, Mr. Johnson. Is that correct?
No, I think it's 11:11, isn't it?
11:11.
Is it?
Okay. I think we meet at 10 or 10:30 at the Green.
Okay. And I think you have another?
Yes, we have-
We have a few.
Couple, yeah.
Anybody yet? Any other recognitions? I do have a recognition. Both Mr. Johnson Staub and I received a letter from Gordon Starr from the Barnstable Town Council, really calling out the help of Town Clerk Michael Palmer and Lori Robbins for their help in the last election in Barnstable. And I'll just read a sentence or two. "As a member of the Barnstable Town Council, I would like to express appreciation from all the residents in Barnstable for your assistance to our town clerk in counting the votes during our last election. As you know, the day started with the vault holding the ballots locked up tight, so we adapted and our voting was allowed to continue until midnight." And Michael Palmer and Lori Robbins really helped Barnstable, and so I thought it was great, and I thought it was important to acknowledge both of them. Other acknowledgements?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm very pleased to announce that the Falmouth Water Department received a prestigious award. We happen to have a few members of the Water Department here today, so Peter, and Steve, and Mike, if you want to come up to the podium. So the award comes from the Massachusetts Water Works Association, and it is the Community Award for 2022. This award is given to one community every year, only one, and it recognizes the department for exemplifying the highest standards of waterworks practice. And Peter was here for the construction of the facility. Steve Rafferty was here as superintendent at that time. Mike Rigetto is our current acting water superintendent, so I want to recognize them, as well as Ray Jack, who was our DPW director when that facility was constructed. So gentlemen, let me present this to you, and congratulations.
Thank you for the quality of our drinking water.
Very impressive. Thank you. Yes?
A few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of spending the day at the DPW, and got a chance to talk to Steve and Mike and Peter quite a bit, along with all the other department heads, and we have a really impressive DPW. And so congratulations, and it's not surprising, because you guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Announcements? Anyone from the Board have announcements? Please.
The Cape Cod Bridges Program is holding two virtual public information meetings on Tuesday, November 15, at 6:00 p.m., and Thursday, November 17, at 6:00 p.m. The flyer is in our packet, but also if you Google Cape Cod Bridges Program, the information should come up to join those. So I think we should encourage everyone to tune into those and have your voices heard about the bridges project.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to mention that there is a fall textile and clothing collection taking place on November 19 and 20, and it's at 790 Main Street. That's the parking area in front of the Senior Center and Gus Canty Recreation Center. They will be accepting clothing, shoes, accessories, linens, curtains, and this all is timed with the upcoming ban on textiles in the waste stream. So just wanted to make the public aware of that. There is information on the town's website, specifically the textile and recycling page of the town website.
To clarify, that's just textile recycling. It's not to be used for clothing for people. If you have nice clothes that you want to donate, you'd probably take them to, you know, a thrift shop, or one of those churches, or one of those-
That is my understanding. That is my understanding, but I defer to Alan if you have more specific information on that.
Just clarification, Doug. It's-
Mike, could you mind coming up?
So everybody else in the town can hear.
I'm Alan Robinson, and I'm chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. It's sort of yes and no. The Service Center and the North Falmouth Church and so forth, they are looking for clothing, looking for clothing in good condition, very good condition, and seasonal.
Right.
They're not looking for summer gear, you know, in November. So if you've got, if you have clothing that's out of season, they should bring that clothing to the operation that the DPW is hosting. And if they have torn, or, you know, or worn-out clothing, that really, the Service Center or the others really aren't going to want to be able to market, they go there too. So as long as it's not stained and greasy, something will happen, something will be, the material will be put to use. So it's not good enough, if it's not good enough for the Service Center, and hand-in-hand, it can still go there and be taken care of.
That's what I was thinking. Just if people have good-quality clothing, I don't want to donate them to get shredded for textile use.
And, yeah, and actually, all the materials they get, get screened. So if it is a good-quality clothing, it will end up being offered to one of the providers.
Oh.
Yes, it doesn't all get just dumped into a rag pile.
Okay, good.
But some of it does become rags, but some of it becomes marketed by secondhand shops and so forth.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, thanks for asking about it.
Sort and look at it. Any other announcements from the Board? I just have one quick one. We did send out the RFQs for the executive search consultants, and those quotes should be back to us by November 10, so that we can really start to kick off the process for hiring a new town manager after we receive those and decide on which executive search consultant we will engage with. Public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in discussion of the topic in any way. It is not appropriate to use the public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Anyone here for public comment? Yes, please.
Hi. Can you guys hear me okay? Great. So I'm Evie Fashon. I'm a student at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, and I'm here with a group of students and technicians, not officially representing Hui, but just here in our own personal capacity, because all of us have faced some really significant challenges finding places to live in Falmouth. I know everyone in this room recognizes that workforce housing in this community is a serious and worsening issue, but you might not always see some of the faces that are attached to these struggles. We could tell you about unexpected losses of housing in months searching for new rentals, or about colleagues who have been unable to leave bad living situations because they couldn't find a new place to move to. But rather than go into our personal experiences, since we are scientists and data-driven, we actually wanted to share some numbers with you. Can we pass out some flyers? Great. So for years, Hui has hosted a community housing page on their website, which has served as a general community resource for listing and finding rentals. We used archived data from this page to pull out some key statistics. So between October 2004 and October 2022, total listings have gone down by 74%. Someone looking today sees only a quarter of the options that they would have seen 18 years ago. Moreover, the proportion of listings that are left are mostly seasonal. Over half of the rentals now listed are only available in the off-season. As stock has decreased, rental prices have skyrocketed, far outpacing inflation and wage increases for this period. This is obviously an unsustainable situation. We can't compete with vacation money, and we won't be able to stay. Science institutions, and of course, other businesses and towns, won't be able to hire new people if these trends continue. So we're just asking for the Select Board and town government to make affordable and attainable rentals a priority in the coming months. This could involve rezoning, promoting development, or creative solutions about limiting Airbnb and short-term rentals. So just thank you for keeping this in your minds moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment?
Hi, my name is Maury Harlowe Hawks, and I own Dock Road. I'm so glad to hear of the outcome of your executive session. I'm sure everybody in West Falmouth will be pleased, along with the rest of the town. But I'm actually here to speak on the Work and Family Mobility Act on question four for tomorrow, and if anybody has any questions, I really hope they look at mass.gov. What is required for a mass license is proof of citizenship, a lawful presence, a social security number, and mass residency. You don't need insurance to get a license. So it's kind of a misconception that people will be safer on the road because they'll be insured. You don't have to have, you are supposed to have it, but you don't have to get it once you get a license. And if you vote yes, you are allowing, circumventing the law and legitimacy of an illegal act. So please vote no, and be respectful of all the people that have done it right, their avenues to do it correctly.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will move into the town manager's preliminary report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on your agenda is a fee hearing, and there are a number of increases being proposed. You do have some background explanations from the respective departments in your packet. I would say that in general, I have reviewed the proposed fees and find them all to be reasonable and justified. What we look at when we set these fees is we look to set them at a level that allows for the town to recover the costs from the users of the services in question, rather than passing those costs on to the general taxpayer. In some instances, there are some exceptions to that. In some instances, there are policy reasons for subsidizing a particular service, in other words, a community benefit shared by taxpayers generally. We do also look at fees charged by neighboring communities as a reference point, and we will have staff, we do have staff members present tonight to answer questions you may have for those fees. The next item on your agenda is the Continued Flow Neutral Variants Hearing for 13 Davis Straits, Falmouth Plaza. We do not have, the parties did not reach an agreement, so that hearing will need to be continued again. I recommend it be continued to December 5, which is not the next meeting, but the one after. You have another hearing, a wetlands hearing for 51 Siders Lane, Daniel H. and Mary E. Webb. The applicant is seeking to replace an existing seawall and construct a ramp from the seawall to a float. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions. There are no shellfish or navigation concerns reported, and I recommend approval.
Mr. Johnson Staub, may I stop you for one moment? I suggest the Board continue to December 9. I think you said the-
It is, that's a correction. It is the 5th.
Yeah, I just looked it up. That is the Monday.
The next hearing is an all-alcohol license change. I'm just double-checking that that is a hearing. Yes, all-alcohol license change for 167 T-Ticket Highway, doing business as Sweet Rice. And as of Friday, there was one required document missing from the application. The applicant's counsel indicated it would be submitted before the hearing. I have not personally seen it yet, so unless it's presented at the hearing tonight, the Board may not be able to approve that license. Next, you have a shade tree hearing for 8 Orchard Street. There are two Norway maples that are proposed to be removed, and the park superintendent, tree warden, Jeremiah Pearson, is here tonight, and he has recommended in favor, given the hazards that these trees present. We then move to your business agenda, and the first item is to vote the interim town manager agreement, and I just want to thank the Board for your support for that agreement. It has been signed by town council as to form, and town accountant has certified availability of funds. I have signed the agreement as well. Next is a report from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. That's the Board's annual meeting with the Select Board, or the committee's annual meeting with the Select Board. The school committee will then be present for its annual meeting with the Select Board. And next, we have a request for a sign variance for 1205 Nathan Ellis Highway at the request of the Cape Cod Church. The church is asking for a variance for an internally lit sign, which is not allowed by right in an agricultural zone. It's also not allowed parenthetically in a residential zone. To our knowledge, this may be the first request for an internally lit sign in either an agricultural or residential zone, so the Board may wish to consider that precedent. I would also note, and as I'm sure you are aware, that this bylaw was written some time ago when internally lit signs were much brighter than they are now, so that's something the Board may also want to consider with respect to this request for a sign variance. And lastly, I do want to point out that the town itself will be before the Select Board in the near future, seeking a variance, very similar situation, for an internally lit sign in a residential zone for the San Rich Road Fire Station. So just consider that as context for your decision there. Lastly, on the business agenda, we have approval of annual license renewals, and all of the licenses listed have been reviewed and are complete, and I recommend approval of those. On the consent agenda, there is an update from this afternoon for Item A, which is a conservation restriction. The requester, the 300 committee, is asking that that item be held and deferred to a future meeting. They had a request from one of the stakeholders to make a change in the form of the conservation restriction. So we're asking that you hold Item A under the consent agenda. Also on the consent agenda, you have two veteran council appointments, and these are, most appointments, as you know, are not on the consent agenda. These are different because there is a specific policy that applies to the Veterans Council, which allows for certain veterans' organizations to nominate a member, and the policy states that the Board will appoint the members nominated, for example, by the disabled veterans, Disabled American Veterans and MVets post-70, unless the Board finds, disapproves a nominee for good cause. So those appointments are on your consent agenda for that reason. And lastly, you have seven executive session minutes for your review and approval tonight.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we will move into public hearings. We will look at the fee hearing, discuss and vote to establish and promulgate fees for 2023.
Madam Chair, is I going to read the public hearing?
Please.
As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, November 7, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. to establish and promulgate fees, which are effective as of January 1, 2023, to be charged by the town departments and agencies, except as provided by Mass General Law, School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. The proposed changes and fees are listed below.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? You all have in your packet, the, all the changes in the fees? Are there questions, comments?
Comment? I just appreciate the format, and that there was supporting information with most of the changes, and the highlighted changes made it very easy to read and understand, so I certainly appreciate that, and I found them to be reasonable.
I really appreciated the decrease in swimming lesson fees for our kids.
Yeah.
I love that. I think that is awesome, and I think it's a great idea to have the town participate in teaching our kids, our vulnerable little ones, how to swim.
Right.
We live in a beach community, and I really like that idea, so thank you for that. Any other comments or questions regarding the proposed fee structure? Change of fee structure?
We will look at the fee hearing, discuss and vote to establish and promulgate fees for 2023.
Madam Chair, is I going to read the public hearing notice?
Please.
As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, November 7, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. to establish and promulgate fees, which are effective as of January 1, 2023, to be charged by the town departments and agencies, except as provided by Mass General Law, School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. The proposed changes in fees are listed below.
Thank you. Questions from the board? You all have in your packet the... All the changes in the fees? Are there questions, comments?
Comment?
Mr. Brown?
I just appreciate the format and that there was supporting information with most of the changes, and the highlighted changes made it very easy to read and understand, so I certainly appreciate that. I found them to be reasonable.
I really appreciated the decrease in swimming lesson fees for our kids. I love that. I think that is awesome, and I think it's a great idea to have the town participate in teaching our kids, our vulnerable little ones, how to swim. We live in a beach community, and I really like that idea. So, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions regarding the proposed fee structure? Change of fee structure?
Madam Chair, if I could just follow on your comment. I just want to make sure that the public is aware that that proposal to decrease the swim lesson fees came from Superintendent Maggie Downe.
Yes, I should have mentioned that. There was a memo in here from Superintendent Clayton.
I move that we approve the presented schedule... Fee schedule.
Okay, we have... I'm sorry? Yes, we do.
Oh, I guess that's right. We should do that.
Any comment from the public regarding the fee schedules or the change therein within our packets? None? Oh, yes, sir.
Andrew McDermit, I live in Falmouth here, and I'm a part-time truck driver, and I'm going over the fees for the Tides Bulkhead and the fuel surcharge fee that you guys voted through last year. That fee is $100 per boat over 55 feet. Now, you guys are passing minutes that the slip usage could be less money than $100 fee. It doesn't make sense to me. Maybe Greg can figure that out, but it doesn't make sense to me. As a user fee, it's not supposed to be profitable, and it's not supposed to be done by size. I think the Supreme Court ruled on that on any fees.
Well, Mr. Fraser would be happy to explain that. Thank you.
That fee was implemented last year by the Waterways Committee because of the interruption it causes. The town, we rent out the Tides Bulkhead as a transient overflow for our larger boats, and we were having problems with boats fueling there, making it difficult for the boat owners... The boat... People coming in. The fee is to compensate the town for keeping the space open long enough so they can come in and fuel. That's what that fee is. And the Waterways Committee did hear those concerns this year at their own fee hearing and chose not to make any recommendation to change that.
Thank you. Any other comment? Thank you. I have a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Comments, questions from the board?
I would just say that I accept Mr. Fraser's explanation that the Waterways Committee did consider the gentleman's concern and chose to stay the course. I don't know if there's any other comments or concerns about it. I think that's a pretty thoughtful committee, so I'm going to take their advice.
I just want to, again, make... I think Doug is... Doug Brown is very clear on it, but just for the public, that's not actually on your fee hearing for action tonight. That transient slip is not on this list that you're being asked to approve tonight.
Right.
Correct, but you're voting a fee that's...
If you'd like to speak, could you come up? Well, actually, we've closed the hearing.
You're voting a fee...
Hello, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do you have to vote to reopen the hearing?
Yes.
I make a motion, reopen the hearing.
Second. All those in favor to reopen the hearing?
Aye.
You're voting a fee where the $100... If it's a boat over 55 feet, boat under $55... Under 55 feet doesn't have to pay a fee at all. Now, you go across the street to Tides Bulkhead, you have to pay $100, no matter the size of the boat, $100 flat fee. So, now you're saying you're voting in October, you could have a 99-foot boat, he pays $99, he has to slip for 23 hours, 24 hours. The fueling is only for however long it takes. And I would... I've never had any issues or know of any issues where there's been confrontations with things being overbooked. We simply pay $2,500 a year to the town as a fee, and it's just... I don't think it's right. It doesn't mathematically make sense. If you look up user fees, it's not to make profit. It's to cover the town's expenses or their effort. So, you've got 2,500, you've got two companies, Loud Fuel and JP Noonan, that pay this $5,000. The $100 fee, I don't know where... How you can justify that.
Okay, thank you.
When there's... In the off-season, it's less money. A 55-foot boat, 56-foot boat can pay $56 for the day. The fee's $100. It doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Somehow, there's...
We... Sir, we've heard your concerns. Thank you, and we're going to...
If you want to follow up with an email...
Yeah, I certainly would.
More detail, and we'll consider that a later date.
Yeah, no, I'd like to get on the agenda further on, but just so everybody's kind of aware on it, that I think there's something we should discuss further, because it puts the people that are paying $2,500 for a permit in a weird spot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'll accept a motion to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Johnson Staub, you said we are not voting on that this evening?
Correct.
Did you have a question? Ms. Scott Price?
So, it's not the transient commercial fishing monthly... Yeah, this one says $250. So, that's something different.
Right.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to move the fee schedule?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion? Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our second hearing, if you would like to read the notice, please?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 22 at 7:30 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth MA, on the application of New Creek LLC for wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw for mixed residential, commercial, overlay district development with affordable rental housing at 13 Davis Straits and said Falmouth, parcel 3915-049D-004. Port of Select Board, publication date Friday, August 5, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
And based on acting interim Town Manager, Mr. Johnson Staub, we need to continue this hearing again until December 5th. So, do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we will continue this hearing until December 5th. Our third hearing, a wetlands dock hearing, Daniel H. and Mary E. Webb permit an existing seawall and construct a ramp from the seawall to a small float in Sitters Pond, locating... Located at 51 Sitters Lane in Falmouth. And could we have the hearing notice, please?
Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 22, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth MA, on the application of... Oh, I apologize, I'm reading the wrong one. That was the one I just read. Thank you. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, November 7, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall. 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Daniel H. and Mary E. Webb for permission to permit an existing seawall and construct a ramp from the seawall to a small float in Sitters Pond, located at 51 Sitters Lane, Falmouth MA. Area affected is Sitters Pond. Interested parties may review the file of this hearing at the Office of Select Board, per order of Select Board, October 14, 2022.
Sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Tom Bunker with VSS Design, representing the webs and their application for this seawall and constructor ramp. I can show you a couple pictures here. You know, that's the GIS. This is the property right here, outlined in yellow, across the pond from Town Hall. We're sitting right over here now. They have this... This is Sitters Pond. So, we have this bit of frontage in this location. Let's see here. So, we did the survey. This is the plan we presented with the Conservation Commission. We have... There's an existing wall that's been there since... Since for a long time. I don't know how old, but before any wetland regulation, anything. And we're proposing that that be licensed, Chapter 91, and a small float and a ramp going in here. Conservation did approve this application. We have an order of conditions. I can show you a couple other pictures. One being, this is the waterfront here. This is the existing stone wall and the pond, and I'm going to get back to the next one. And this is not the actual... And this is a picture of what it will be like. It'll be attached to the wall. Of course, in our case, it's a stone wall, not the concrete wall, and aluminum ramp going out to a small float. And that's what we're... What we're requesting, and I know it comes up usually as a question of the Chapter 91 access across the property. What I have here is a picture of a path, and do have the... That's the wrong one. There is a path on the plan. That picture was taken in this location right here. There's a path and steps coming in from the direction of the United Church Apartments and Sitters Pond Road. So, people do walk across here currently, cross this lawn, and then the path continues across the next property, over in the direction of St. Patrick's and Bean Street. So, this is what will be allowed as the Chapter 91 passage across this property.
You mean St. Barnabas?
St. Barnabas, you're right. Yeah. Yep. Well, it's going towards St. Patrick's also.
That's true.
Barnabas is closer. You're right. So, that's what they're asking for, is basically a... They showed a little float like that in the... Up at the north end is Sitters Pond.
Questions from the board?
Not for me.
Mr. Patterson?
I didn't read the actual Conservation Commission conditions, but I assume there's no motors used on any of these craft?
This was presented as a kayak, small sailboat float. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bunker. Our fourth hearing is to approve an application for multiple amendments to the All Alcoholic Common Victroler License, including change of manager, change of LLC manager, and change of beneficial interest. Train Bridge View LLC, doing business as Sweet Rice, at 167 T-Ticket Highway, East Falmouth. And from your report, there's a document missing. Do we have that document?
Yes, I do. Randy Collect, Bean, and O'Connor.
I should read the hearing. Yeah, we need to read the hearing notice.
Sorry.
And then you will have 10 minutes.
And notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Train Bridge View LLC, doing business as Sweet Rice, has applied for multiple amendments to its All Alcoholic Common Victroler License, located at 167 T-Ticket Highway, T-Ticket MA, including a change of manager, change of LLC manager, and change of beneficial interest. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 7, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. on the above application, per order of the Select Board, publication date Friday, November 28, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you.
Randy Collect, Bean, and O'Connor. You had asked for the change of manager. I've got one copy here, and it was an email sent earlier to us, and she has it. This was filed late Friday. Other than that, were there any other questions about the application?
Let's give Mr. Johnson Staub just a moment to look at that, to make sure it is what we need and it is complete.
Yes, this appears to be the document that was missing.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Change of membership or just management?
It's an inter-family move, so Amy's going to be taking over from her father.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? I move to close the hearing. I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I don't see any issues with it.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
I was just going to suggest that the board's practice has been to invite the manager up and just have a conversation about the responsibilities under the liquor law and leave the managers here, so you may want to follow that practice?
Certainly.
I'll stand in for Doug Jones.
Hi, my name is Amy Tuck, and I'm the new owner and manager of Sweet Rice.
What we have in the past liked to do is make sure that the manager understands that they are responsible for making sure that all of the alcoholic beverage regulations are followed, and that you yourself are actually responsible for adhering to all those regulations.
Yes.
Acknowledge that. That's all we ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments? I move approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, our fifth hearing, Shade Tree Hearing, on application of Mary Vanhold Todd and David and Stephen Vanhold for the removal of two Norway maple trees at 8 Orchard Street in Woods Hole.
Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Falmouth Select Board in the Select Board Meeting Room, Monday, November 7, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. on the application of Mary Vanhold Todd and David and Stephen Vanhold for the removal of two trees at the following location, 8 Orchard Street, two Norway maples, weak branching structure caused by co-dominant stems and included bark. Removal is necessary because of the probable likelihood of failure if a large wind event were to occur. If a large failure were to happen, the house is a likely target. Publication date, October 21, 2022.
Any comments, questions from the board?
Is it the town's responsibility to remove these trees? Or is the applicant asking for permission to remove them using a public or a private service?
Good evening, Jeremiah Pearson, Tree Warden. The homeowner is asking for the town to remove the trees.
Is it in the town right of way?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I see all the indications in the pictures and the explanation of the weaknesses and the vulnerabilities, so...
Anyone here for public comment regarding the removal of the trees? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion from the board?
Looks like a good idea.
I'd say so. Thank you, Jeremiah. I move approval.
Second, Mr.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you, DPW, for taking that on. Okay, we will move into business. First on our list, vote interim Town Manager Agreement. After a very long time and lots of conversations, do I have a motion? I move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of voting the interim Town Manager Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank you, and thank you for your patience on that, Mr. Johnson Staub.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a... Ooh, where did... Where did Mr. Robinson go? We are running a little early. I can take some things out of order if we choose we could go through and approve annual license renewals for 2023. Okay? All Alcohol Restaurant License and Common Victroler License, Casa Vallarta, 70 Davis Straits, East End Tap, 734 T-Ticket Highway. All Alcohol Club License, Cape Cod Curling, 37 Highfield Drive. Wine and Malt and Cordial Inholder License and... and inholder license, Palmer Ave Inn, 81 Alp, Palmer Ave. Wine and malt package store, Jack and the Beanstalk, 800 Gifford Street, Windfall Market, 77 Scranton Ave. Common victorial license, Les Bon Jour, 420 East Falmouth Highway. New Golden Dynasty, 13 Davis Straits, Unit 2, Pie in the Sky, 10 Water Street. Inholder license, Admiralty Inn, 51 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth Inn, 824 Main Street, and Shoreway Acres Inn, 50 Shore Street. Entertainment, Casa Vallarta, 70 Davis Straits, East End Tap, 734 T-Ticket Highway. Sunday entertainment license, Casa Vallarta, 70 Davis Straits. Used car dealer license, Intergas, 10 North Main Street, O'Hara Motors Inc., 50 Spring Bars Road.
I move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment is at the beginning of the meeting? We do it first?
Is it according to the agenda or the newspaper for time? Didn't realize that.
Okay, yes, public comment is first thing when we open at 7 o'clock. It says it right on the agenda, right underneath it. Okay, let's move on to the minutes. Everyone had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes for executive sessions, June 21st, 2022, June 27th, 2022, July 5th, 2022, July 11th, 2022, July 25th, 2022, August 15th, 2022, August 22nd, 2022.
The only thing I would suggest as an edit is on the minutes of the executive session for July 5th. There's an ambiguity in here about the town manager, who that is. And I would just suggest that we, we put the name up where it starts off number one, town manager, and that we include the name Julian Susso in there. So it's obvious who that person is.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
There's no other mention of who that person is in the minutes. And with that, I found them all to be in order and found no discrepancies. And so I would move approval of this set of executive committee meeting.
Can I amend your motion to move approval and hold?
Oh, and hold, absolutely.
Not releasing to the public.
Alright, intended.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approved and held, thank you. Okay, let me get back on track here. Mr. Robinson, you are back, okay. Report from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and we have slated you for 15 minutes, and that includes questions from the board.
Yes.
Okay?
So please, yeah, please let me know when it's time.
We'll get, I will, I'll give you a warning.
I'll try to keep my presentation brief.
Great, thank you. That's your committee, correct?
It's right there, you want to use the mouse and just fire that up?
Um, as always, Peter, if you can just show me how to get started. It's just a piece here. Okay, forward is the bottom here.
Actually, I think you can, you know.
Yes, it is. Okay. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I'm Alan Robinson, and I'm Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Our Vice Chair, Amy Roth, we were at the Board of Health meeting together, and she went home for having dinner. And so she's not here only because she's probably still eating dinner, but we'll go ahead anyway. We're a seven-person committee, of which right now we have only six. So we are looking for a, someone to contact the Select Board with their interest in becoming a member of the Solid Waste Advisor Committee. And we hope that will come soon. We've got three primary roles in supporting the community and supporting the Select Board. One is to take a leading role in helping the town maintain and enhance its integrated solid waste management program. The second is encourage development and implementation of environmentally, physically and socially sound means and methods to reduce trash tonnage by smart recycling, greater reuse, food waste separation, and reduced packaging. And finally, to operate the pick of the litter swap shop to promote waste reduction by reuse and repurposing. And we'll look for any opportunity to promote. So as you can see, I'm wearing our, our team uniform that was created, one of our volunteers, and we have got a great new set of volunteers at the swap shop, said, you know what, it would really be helpful if we had T-shirts so people could, visitors could identify who, you know, the volunteers are and to ask questions of and so forth, and that the volunteers could go, you know, talk to the patrons. And we talked to Mary Reither and to Peter McConerty, and we have them, and it really makes a difference. And the volunteers very much appreciate it. We've got, want to start with acknowledgements and appreciation. The first is to Department of Public Works. There's a whole list of things we could put here, but there are three that really stand out. First off is, we'll call it that curbside collection challenge that we all, all of us in town encountered in spring and early summer. DPW did everything they could within their power, which is actually relatively limited, to work with the vendor, the past, previous vendor, supplier of services, and with the community, the residents, who were upset, understandably so, of their trash and recycling not being picked up. And they very much reached out to the community, worked very closely with a lot of individuals, and it was, it was sort of a continuation of a trend that is a very good trend, and it continued with the recycling cart rollout. They did a very, very good job of planning out the whole process and following through, and including a great deal of interaction with the community. Because as you know, and as you all heard in your roles, there's a number of residents who, you know, were kind of upset about the carts because of the size and their age or their physical abilities. And the DPW has and continues to work with them to find solutions. And that is, it's impressive. They really did work well, and they represented the town very well. And the third, which relates to these first two, is their degree of engagement. Finally, and we've been asking, the Solid Waste Advisor Committee has been asking this for years, they have a Facebook page that was authorized by the administration. So they, so the, so the solid waste, the recycling solid waste coordinator can reach out to the community with information. We, they've, she's worked to update our, the town website on solid waste. It's much better, it's much clearer than it was before. And there's Facebook, and there's been, there's been public presentations on, on the carts and everything else. So it's really, we see a change, and it's a really, really good change. The second is specifically for Peter Johnson's job and Peter McConerty. And this relates to the cart rollout. We, the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, saw that the 19 hours that the solid waste coordinator has to work each week just weren't enough for everything that was going on, particularly with regard to the rollout, but with other things as well. And we asked, going back to January, we formally requested that the, that the administration find a way to assign that position more hours, at least on a temporary basis during this really critical phase of needing to get this rollout right. And the, the, the previous town manager flatly rejected us. But we did keep at it. And Peter, the two Peters, found a way so that in those critical months of July and August, the coordinator had 40 hours of which to work. And it made, it made a huge difference. And in our, our opinion, it made it from potential, I won't say a fiasco, but, you know, a mess to a real success. And we really appreciate, we really appreciate that, Peter. Appreciate the swap shop volunteers. As I said, we've got a whole new crew. There is enthusiasm, there's joy. We had 1,000 visitors to the swap shop in the month of September. While we don't have numbers for the previous years, that's phenomenal. That's close to 30, we're only open 12 hours a week, 12 hours a month. No, 36 hours a month, I'm sorry. And that's like 30, that's like 30 patrons an hour. That is, that's really something, and that's a change. And it's with enthusiasm and joy, and we're putting, you know, more, more what would be waste going to the landfill is being kept from the landfill and going to second uses, and that is great. I want to thank, I want to thank Scott Zalinski, because since Scott has become a member of your board, we now have a board member that's coming to our meetings. And we haven't had that for years, and it really does help. And I really thank you, Scott. We, we thank you, Scott. Want to thank the Falmouth Enterprise, because there's been a lot of news. And without that news coverage, you know, the community wouldn't be aware of the challenges the community is facing and how the, how the town is, is working to address it. And they give us the opportunity to write Talking Trash, which is a great way to directly get, address the community and the Falmouth community as a whole that really, you know, rallied with these new carts and during the difficult period with the trash collection. And that's all very good. Our accomplishments. We've really now, and three, those of you who were three years ago know that we didn't feel we had a very good partner, we didn't really have a partnership with the, with the Department of Public Works. But three years later, we have a very active partnership, and it is very, 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 very appreciated, and it's very, very good. We've been working on mandatory recycling regulations with the Board of Health. We are very close, we just met with them this evening. And in their next meeting in two weeks, I think we will have, they'll, they'll come to a vote, point that they can take a vote on the rules and regulations that we've been working on for some time. Mentioned the energized pick of the litter shop. And that, again, is something we'd asked for for years at the DPA, but get out there in the community and message, and they are. And we feel that we've had a part in making that happen, and we are very happy, and we consider that to be an accomplishment. Our challenges, and not Solid Waste Advisor Committee's challenges, but the department's challenges and the community's challenge, your challenge, is to begin to seriously reduce the tonnage of trash. And to do that, we need to develop a multifaceted waste reduction plan. We just can't just go this, that and the other, we're going, we're going. We've been talking about reducing trash for years. Quite seriously, you know, we, our committee really hasn't really engaged in that to the degree necessary. So that, we only, that office comes to our requests. In the other years, we've had like a long laundry list of requests. Many of those, most of those requests have actually been addressed, and we're really appreciative. But we're only coming with one request this year. We're keeping it really straightforward. And that is, and it's not just a request to you all, but it's a request to the Department of Public Works leadership, to the manager's office, to the budget director, to the finance committee and town meeting. And that is simply, our town's physical year 2024 operating budget include a line item making the DPW's recycling and waste management coordinator position full-time and at a pay rate, pay grade commensurate with the actual level of responsibilities. By doing this, by adding the additional, I guess, 20 hours or so to this position, so much more can be accomplished. A plan can be developed, you know, we wouldn't have to go to a consultant. It could be developed in-house. And so much other outreach to the community and innovative areas. We can start, you know, start with several things, but only if that coordinator has 40 hours. Otherwise, it doesn't change. We just kick it, we just continue, we'll just continue to kick things down, the can down, can down the road, and we will not make, make a difference. And when you think about, you know, there's some, not low-hanging fruit, but there's some big pieces of fruit to go for, and that is food waste reduction. And we are spending right now, this year, probably $250,000. Quarter, you know, roughly a quarter of our solid waste disposal fee goes for food waste. We can reduce that substantially. And those are the kinds of things we can do, but only if there's 40 hours in that position. And that's my presentation, I'm happy to answer, answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
How can we convince the public not to put plastic bags in the recycling bins?
Well, that's a, Doug, that is a challenge. We, we, we need to continuously communicate. We, you know, you've seen the articles, you've seen the articles that were in the Falmouth Enterprise, where the Falmouth Enterprise reporter came with us and to the Bourne Facility and saw our recycling dump and saw, saw modest, moderate amount of bags. She also, she also went with us to the, along with the department leadership, to the Rochester Materials Recovery Facility and saw a whole lot of plastic bags there. What we were seeing actually wasn't Falmouth's, but it's a problem, it's a problem everywhere. We just have to continuously message, but, and also that the, the NOSA, you know, when they're doing the curbside cleanups or pickups, if they see, I mean, if they see plastic bags, that they tag the recycling receptacles and leave them there. Or if they see it as it's being dumped, that they go back and leave a message about that and that continually message about it and put it on FCTV and, and Facebook and everywhere else. We just have to find ways to get to everybody, not just the people who read the enterprise or look at the website and so forth. We're looking for ideas from you all, if you have, if you have ideas.
Now, that's the one thing that is like, now that we've got the automated buckets, it's harder to notice.
It is going to be hard. But we've never really pushed, we never pushed Republic to manage this and stop it when they see it. And NOSA does have that charge.
Okay.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, because it wasn't obvious to me when you were talking. This is using plastic bags for recycling, recycled.
Correct. Yeah, for trash.
Regular trash.
Oh, yes, for trash. Do put your trash in plastic bags or paper bags or whatever bags. This is for recycling, no plastic bags. And also, at the same time, not everyone's got the message that you can't put additional recycling beyond what's in your, your, your 96, 96 gallon cart. You can't put it beside it. If there's, you leave cardboard beside it, you leave other bags, bags, even if it's paper bags, it will not be, it will not be picked up.
I'm going to try more of a comment than a question. Alan, at the last meeting specifically, I heard, I heard the committee talk about the ancillary benefits of that position being extended going forward with respect to grant writing.
Yep.
And, and putting out fires on a daily basis, which don't back along the system as a monetary benefit. Is that still your position on that?
That is. There, there are so many, her time, the 19 hours that she has, even with the cart system so well in place, she's spending a lot of time on that, a lot of time answering questions. And those kinds of things will always come up. But it's being able to have time to start the plan and to start implementing pilot programs and, and other things. You can't be done with 19 hours.
Thank you, thank you, Ben, Chair.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, just last one thing. If you haven't been to the swap shop, come up there on a Saturday, Saturday morning. It's, you'll be very, you'll be, you'll be very happy with what you see.
Great.
Thanks for all the great work.
Thank you. Is the school committee ready?
The superintendent is here, and the finance director, they were waiting on the chair.
Okay.
There she is.
Welcome, Dr. Dorr.
Hi.
Chair Cannonopolis and Mr. St. Julian.
Some technical issues here.
Okay.
Does it send a, does it look like a presentation? How do we have to do this? Oh, there you go. Perfect, okay. You're better rolling than I am. Okay, we, we will roll together. Good evening. As Nancy Taylor mentioned, my name is Natalie Cannonopolis, and I'm Chair of the School Committee, joined this evening by Dr. Lori Dorr, the superintendent, and our new Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, Mr. Henry St. Julian. So thank you. So we're going to begin this evening by going over our school committee goals. As you know, every year, the school committee drafts goals during our retreat. Um, as you know, every year, uh, the school committee drafts goals during our retreat. And our goals, uh, for fiscal year 23 center around strengthening key, three key areas, communication, DEI and school safety. The first two goals constitute ongoing work and focus our efforts on how we can contribute to a healthy learning environment for our students. So the first goal is to develop and implement, um, a multi-year communication strategy. And to really drill into what that means for us is that members of the school committee will engage in two-way communication with stakeholders to better deliver information as well as to actively listen and solicit feedback. Communication will be approached with an equity lens to ensure all voices have the opportunity to be heard. So this year, we held, um, so far, three listening sessions. We had a session for students during their Clipper time, um, at the high school and we also offered a session for staff and families. And the key of these listening sessions, we don't have an agenda, we don't have set questions, it's an opportunity for them to come to us and really speak their truth about what is working or areas for growth. Um, and again, to make sure we have access, uh, translation services and childcare are provided. The other thing that we recognize is that everyone has the time to sit through our lengthy meetings. Um, so at the end of school committee meetings, we, um, offer a brief summary, um, that is then uploaded to the district's Facebook page. It's about a minute long and it speaks of a few key points at every meeting. I'm gonna roll. Um, our second goal, um, is a continuation again of a goal that we established last year, which is to advance efforts to address equity, inclusion, diversity and belonging and systemic racism in Falmouth Public Schools. So as I mentioned, we have a new Director of DEIB, um, and we established an advisory committee this year to support his work. We are also expanding our partnership with the Wampanoag Education Program and we'll speak to that a little bit further in our presentation. And we are also going to conduct a district-wide equity audit, um, conducted by the Mid-Atlantic Our third goal, um, is that the Falmouth School Committee will participate in efforts to address school safety and security. So as you may know, the district has a Health and Safety Advisory Committee, um, and this committee is going to explore best practices to further address the physical security of the school buildings and the social and emotional health as it relates to creating a supportive learning environment for all. And we will also support the superintendent's efforts to sustain a strong partnership with the Falmouth Police and Fire Departments. And next, have you seen this slide? Um, this wonderful mural is at Falmouth High School, um, and it was created by, um, our Falmouth High School students with support from the Falmouth Educational Foundation and the MCC. Um, and as you know, the school committee wrote and adopted a land acknowledgement last year and this mural is, um, I like to think inspired by that land acknowledgement. Um, and so very briefly, I would like to reiterate the land acknowledgement that we adopted as a school committee. Falmouth Public Schools acknowledge that we are, excuse me, I'm getting over cold, that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Suckanessit, Wacoit, Sippawisset, Tattikit and Tapakoit as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Falmouth and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people in alignment with the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools. We pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation. So again, that land acknowledgement then became this beautiful work part. Yes. You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, thank you for having us. Um, so just to shift, are you gonna work for me?
Oh, well, thank you.
So, uh, just to shift a little bit. Um, so just shifting a little bit here to talk about, um, the schools, um, just, this is our current enrollment per school. Um, you can see that we, uh, this year we have 3,015 students. Uh, this is, uh, shows a decline in our student population. Uh, it's been a steady decline, uh, for many years, uh, as it has been across the Cape, um, districts. Um, and although, uh, the, uh, district is, um, seeing less enrollment, our needs are certainly increasing. And so the next slide, uh, next couple of slides will show the, uh, demographic. So in this first slide, this is our economically disadvantaged. As you can see, um, over many years, uh, the change, uh, that has occurred. And in the last four years, uh, we have, uh, seen an increase of 391 students that qualify, uh, for the economic disadvantaged, uh, category. Um, a little bit about our multilingual, uh, learners. As you can see, um, there's been quite a, a increase, uh, as well in, um, uh, 2020, we've had 132 students and in this school year, we are at 176, uh, students. We've seen a, a increase of, um, you know, almost 50 students over the course of the four years. And our students with disabilities, um, we, uh, have seen an increase. You can see we were holding steady, uh, from, for many years, you know, 17, 18, 19. You can see over the last few years, it has grown to work 22%, uh, we've seen an increase of 111 students over the last four years. Um, and I, I share this to show that, uh, and of course, we read this nationally, uh, and statewide, um, that the pandemic certainly had, uh, increase, um, uh, in our needs for our students and I think that this somewhat demonstrates this as well. We, um, to address the needs, we have increased, um, our reading specialist, um, our math support, special education teachers, teaching assistants, um, uh, the number of ELD, um, teachers. Uh, we have actually, if you, if you think about it with the ELD and FY13, we had three teachers for the district. Uh, this year we have eight, um, across the, the district. So just that increase, but we also, um, counseling has become something that's, uh, that's been a real need for our students. So the social, emotional health of our students, um, the needs are just so much greater right now. So we have increased, um, a number of counselors, all while trying to keep our class sizes Um, the next couple of slides, um, some great pictures of our students. Um, just want to point out that, um, our Woods Hole partnership, uh, is extremely, um, strong. We started that before the pandemic. We've been able to maintain, um, our relationship, um, partnership and we've, uh, now have an opportunity for students at every single grade level. Um, multiple opportunities, um, at many of the grade levels that we're continuing to grow. Um, we call them our living classrooms, our students are, um, able to, um, go to Woods Hole, Hooey, NOAA, MBL, um, USGS. So many of the opportunities, they come to us, we go to them, students have the, that experience, but also with the greater, um, Falmouth community. So, um, Natalie had mentioned, um, our continued growth, uh, in partnership with the Wampanoag, um, tribe. Um, we're also established, um, a partnership with the Cape Verdean, um, community, with the Museum and Cultural Center, um, and, uh, all of these opportunities actually are integrated into our curriculum. So we have aligned with, um, the opportunities with our partners where, um, where it fits into, um, the curriculum. Our outdoor learning, uh, started during the pandemic. Um, a group of parents with the Outdoor Learning Committee, uh, then the 300 Committee, uh, joined, um, and helped us out with, uh, we're beginning our nature trails. So now we have two schools, we're, uh, beginning our third school, uh, and it's on the 300 Committee property, um, and they're helping us design these, um, nature trails that are connected with the curriculum. So students are learning as they, as they go, um, through the trails. Our VIPS partnership, um, is strong, stronger than ever. Um, you know, just our community volunteers, um, but also our student volunteers. Um, and here's, uh, a picture there of the college readiness and preparation, um, program through the volunteers. Comfort, comfort pets has been extremely valuable, um, always, but certainly in the last couple of years to continue that program. And something new, our wellness committee has started this year is the, um, guest chef program. So we are working to have, um, a guest chef from a local restaurant, uh, join our school, prepare the, um, meals following their, um, uh, USDA, um, guidelines. And so we had our first one at North Falmouth. Missoula and Valeante, um, has a child at, at North Falmouth that was a good match. They came, they prepared lunch, the children just loved it. It was a, it was, um, pretty, so just, I, I can't stress enough how wonderful this community is, how they love our schools and how they come out and support and try to be a part, part of the schools. Um, we started this year a new program, the Food Justice, um, program at the high school. Um, our college fair is stronger than ever, we had over 110 colleges, uh, represented. Um, just a few weeks ago, our music programs, uh, are thriving, uh, Morse Pond Lawrence and the high school, and I'm happy to say, um, that we were able to extend our strings program to Morse Pond this year, uh, with 30 students, uh, interested in the strings. So we're excited about being able to, um, expand that. We've returned, uh, after the pandemic to our field trips to the National Seashore, Pennakes and, uh, and many others. There's a, uh, our arts, uh, program at the high school always visits, um, someplace and they journal and they do their artwork, uh, and this is, happens to be in, uh, Western Mass. And our, uh, partnership continues to be strong with the, uh, Falmouth Road Race. Um, and as Natalie says, uh, one of our, um, new directions, um, is, includes our, um, Director of DEIB and so I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Henry at this point, um, to share more about that. Yes, off it.
Okay. So, um, my name is Henry St. Julian and, um, my, uh, I've been here since 2016 as a assistant principal at the high school and fell in love with this, uh, town since before that, 2010, when I first, uh, got into the education of the town. Love this town. And, um, I, I love the, the, the drive for the schools. The drive says, you know what, we need to make sure that all, we need to make sure that all kids are, have the top knowledge education. And I think that's the work. The work is, all of our students are going to thrive in the, in, in all the schools from preschool to kid. That's our goal. The issue is that some of our marginalized kids don't have that option, that they're, they're struggling and so what we want to do is, we want to dig deep and find out, how can we make sure that everyone succeeds in Falmouth? And I have this, this, uh, vision right here, which is called, Falmouth is my beloved community. And it's a really much of like, let's make sure no one's, you know, no one's, uh, on, being left up behind and we're gonna go through it, um, in, in this manner. The, what I've done, let me just see, what I've done is, I have two key, um, quotes that I love to show and really, uh, the beloved community comes from Dr. Martin Luther King, which basically says, you know what, the goal is that we need, we need to create a community. It's not just one person, but we need to create a community that will require quanti- qualitative change, that means something specific. And it also will require qualitative, something in all eyes, like that you feel good when it happens. And I love, um, our former, um, late great, uh, Supreme Court Justice, Thurgood Marshall says, unless our children begin to learn together, that means together in this great, uh, exercise, then there's little chance, little hope that our people will ever learn to live together. So the thing that we're doing here, I think it benefits our entire town. And so what, what I've done is, what we've done is basically, we would like to have a, um, a, a vision where the school is operating in a very inclusive action base. When you say my, uh, Falmouth is, is an action-based activity where the my is ownership. It's not just one person, it's not just two people, it's everyone, it's all of us trying to get together and make sure that we can do, um, the changes. Beloved is a great word of, it's basically the, the force, the power we're using is love. We want to love our students, not just the ones at top, we're loving all our students. Something that we don't talk about in education, but I think this is the power, uh, of our action. And community is the force. We're gonna come around, we're not gonna do it by one or multiple, so that's the aspect on there. So, uh, really quick and I love for, I love to meet all you guys to let you know what we're doing, but really quick, there are different stages. Right now, we're talking about the, uh, awareness stage, what's the big problem? Community, culture, is, you know, we're, we're really trying to, um, see what the real problem is. We're getting some from outside, we already talked about an equity audit. MAC is M-A-E-C is the outside group from Maryland coming in to check things out. And then we're gonna start doing, um, strategic work and trying to, trying to drive out anything, any barriers that are keeping any of our marginalized kids, uh, anything, the assistance that we need to do that, we want to do that. We're gonna have equity teams, not one person, but every school is gonna have a team to look to see if there's problems, to remove the problems. We want, we want to be intentional. Intentional is that, that we're gonna be dealing with that. And, um, there's gonna be a beloved, uh, community, we've already had one, which is, we're getting the community to start talking about these issues and say, what can we do? What is that that we can do? And I, I really believe it's not, it's not just the schools, but the community at large. We really want to say, what is equity? Is equity taken away from our, from our kids or is it making sure that every kid has the opportunity to succeed? And I hope that's the message because from outside, you might say, oh, they're just taking, no, we want to make sure everyone's here. And I'm calling out to you and saying, I would like you to also be in that community and spread that message that we want to make sure when they come to Falmouth, uh, schools, they're gonna get the top education from bottom to top and whoever that kid is, they're, all the kids are assets in our building and we want to make sure that is. So I do have, I'm looking at time, I do have, uh, to, to make sure that you are part of the community and joining, I had teachers, I brought, made these, uh, t-shirts out here and I would love for you to have the my, Falmouth is my beloved community t-shirt and be part of this message that, uh, we would like you to be part of it. Uh, it's a good, it's a good outside, I know it's a summer, I mean, it's the, we're hitting the winter, winter months, but, uh, you know, it's a good, uh, shirt, but I, really, I'm hoping that you're part of the effort, community members are part of the efforts, there's so much more. Um, I'll end with this last thing here, this is, this is to show that our school is not just more than just one culture. We had the, our partnership, uh, with the Wampanoag Indians was, uh, we celebrate with them, um, last month with the Indigenous Day, um, dance and we went to every single school. We showed them every, you know, just, uh, they, they taught us, uh, about their dance, about their culture and all that kind of stuff. And at the end, I was, I was so happy about the, the kids' response. At the end, I go, why are we doing this? Why are we showing you, uh, the indigenous people dance? And the discussion was, if we only have, if we only show one culture, then this school's is about, one, this school is just for one culture, but we show you different cultures and we show this, we say, this school, these schools here are for all cultures and people and we, and I asked the kids, are we a belonging, are we a belonging school? Are we a belonging community? And all the kids said, yes, and that's why they want to do more and that's why we had that. And I was so pleased by the response. And actually, this is outside and some of the places, people from outside kind of stopped, you know, um, you know, from their distance and they go, what's going on? And really, it was really good to see the kids and the community, um, getting involved in that. And that is mine. I went over, I went over.
Three minutes, Henry.
Ran through a lot. Yeah, no, no, we all collectively ran through that. Yeah, so any questions?
Questions from the board, comments from the board?
I, well, I just had.
Mr. Patterson?
I, I watched your last, uh, school committee, meeting and was pretty impressed with the, kind of the test results, the MCAS results compared with the rest of Massachusetts and how well that Falmouth students have done after this pandemic period. It's pretty impressive, you know, and, and so if you can summarize it better than I because I don't want to misquote something, but I, um, but it seems to me that, you know, Falmouth had, has really done a really great job to comp- compensate for these limitations that the COVID pandemic has put on us. Um, now, I've been volunteering in the schools for a long time, so I only see a very small sample though, but when I saw the test results, I was pretty impressed. Can you give us a quick summary? Now, even if it's an overall because.
Real quick. Um, so, uh, in, uh, reading and math, both, we, um, outperformed the state, um, average in almost every grade and every, uh, category. Um, we came within a couple of points, um, uh, at a couple of grade levels, but our most impressive, um, uh, I, I feel like our, uh, data that we had was in every. But our most impressive, I, I feel like our data that we had was in every single subcategory. So our economic disadvantaged, our students with disabilities are, we outperformed by great percentages. And then with our students with disabilities, scoring at 80% over. So it was, that, that piece to me was very heartwarming that our, that we're really doing a good job of supporting all of our students.
It's wonderful, it's so wonderful to celebrate the aggregate.
Yes.
But when you really dig deep and you start to see about disadvantaged kids and, and they're making it, that's awesome.
I agree.
Congratulations.
That was really impressive. So thanks for all your hard work and for making sure that nobody gets left on the sidelines. You know, that's, that's pretty impressive.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Very appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a request for a variance to the sign code. Cape Cod Church, 1205 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth.
Sorry, I'm going to get out of your way. Hi, I'm Mark McSherry from Executive Director of Cape Cod Church.
Does the board have questions about the request for the sign variance?
Well, I do, since, I guess we're sort of entering into new territory with the internally lit signs. And I, I guess I'm trying to get a feel for what that is going to be like. Is this the kind of, would this be representative of what that internally lit sign would be like?
So I think there is a few around town. And if you come down, the Hutker sign, the Chapman signs, and the Lawrence Lynch signs are the internally lit signs. And so I don't, we didn't have a rent, we have, we gave you some information and I have copies if you didn't get it.
Yeah, we have.
Yep, that show what our current sign is, what the new sign will look like in a rendering. That, that sign has been permitted from an exterior lit standpoint. So exactly what you're looking at has already been permitted. And we're just looking to get the variance to do the internally lit letter signs, like the other signs that are in town.
Mr. Johnson, stop.
So in case it's not clear, I just want to say that there are internally lit signs in town, but they're in the commercial, they're in the business districts, that they're not in residential or agricultural zones.
Right.
So that the precedent would be to have an internally lit sign in an agricultural zone.
I think there, there may be an internally lit sign in an agricultural zone across the street from us at the Barnstable County Fairgrounds as well.
So there is an exemption, you're talking about the, the sign that has the, the weather and the, the time of day. There is an exemption, a specific provision in the code for that.
Mr. Patterson?
I guess, I, I have a question about how do we limit this? Because this may be a, a very subtle sign, you know, lit, maybe not any more obvious or with any excess light than if you externally lit it. But how do we set some sort of a standard that we can say, this needs to be met? Because I can imagine internally lit signs that are far more intrusive and potentially even distracting for drivers going along the road. So how do we set a standard so that we can say, everything's fine up to this point and, but not beyond?
I think that's a difficult question. There is a provision in the bylaw for glare. So in terms, so that's one element of control that, that is in the bylaw. The signs internally or externally lit cannot produce glare on the roadway. But beyond that, you raise a question I just don't have a really good answer for.
Well, we could look at the lumen capacity of the sign. How bright is it? You know, if it's LED, there's the color brightness, whether it's 2700 or even 2000. And maybe what we should do is find out what the intensity of this light is and see if we like it. If we don't like it, can we change it if it's too bright? Can we reduce the brightness or is it a done deal once it's on?
So we haven't done it yet, so it's not a done deal. But the question I might ask back is, was there a standard set for the internally lit signs in the commercial zones? If the issue was safety and glare in the commercial zones too, which are on traveled highways, was there a standard for that?
Which is a good question. Yeah. There is. Yeah, I. I would say we did not ask that question. I don't remember asking that, but you know, as we move forward, we're thinking more about it, so.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Oh. What's the, what's the restriction on? I'm sorry.
Lumens or?
No, no, no. What, what's the, Sam asked a question, what's the difference between external lighting? What, is it, is there a restriction on how much external lighting that can be used on a sign rather than inside, with floodlights?
Yeah.
So is there a way to quantify that to make it as equal to what is allowed by external internally? If that makes any sense?
I don't think we've really nailed that down. I think we mostly focus on size.
What we do, what externally lit fixtures cannot be broadcast out into traffic so that there's, it's more directional, whereas this comes out and goes in all directions, right? I just, you know, it seems to me it's something we ought to take a look at, because I could see that there, there's certainly a lot, and this is not your sign, but there's an opportunity if we're going to begin to take a look at this type of sign in the future for abuse and, as I said, things that can be distracting to drivers. And so I, I just want us to take, let's take a look and see, maybe we're going to, maybe this is a learning experience and we'll have to grandfather these things at some point, but I, I just feel like it's worth taking a closer look at.
It certainly gives us an opportunity in a, in a spot that is very distracting with the fair going on and everything else, to be able to kind of set a, some guidelines for it. If you're going to move that forward, I would say 151 would be a perfect place to start that conversation, at least look into it.
And this one's pretty far removed from the road, so I don't see it to be a distraction concern.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
I just think that we're, now that we're realizing that we're setting a new precedent, we should just kind of take note of what we're approving and then determine whether or not that's the standard, I mean, if we do approve it. So can you give us any more information about what the brightness and the intensity and how it's measured? And just so we know what we're talking about more when we go down the road?
We understand that signs are intended to educate and get people's attention, but there's got to be a limit to it. And we have to be concerned about the aesthetics certainly, because we worry about changing the aesthetics of this town. That's one of the reasons why we have a sign control bylaw, so that we don't have a place that looks gaudy, you know, that it still reflects that traditional New England town ambiance. So there's issues like that that we take into consideration. But, and then there's the distraction issue, you know? I mean, if it's catching people's eye too much, that's not necessarily a, a good thing for drivers.
The, there was a question I had, because I had met with the, with Jonathan, and I was wondering if he had made any comments on this when he passed it up to you, because he had approved the exterior lit sign. And then did he make any comments regarding the interior lit sign? Because I've, as I've understood it, the, this is a new technology and it's, it's used in this town and, and in other towns. So it's becoming fairly common. And, and I'm not an expert, but I believe that those, those issues might be universal as to whether interior lit signs are a distraction. But they're, they're becoming much more common and it might be a case where the code just hasn't caught up with, with the technology of the interior lit letters.
For sure.
I see the, one comment here from Mr. Dickinson says that I'll include in the sign application, if approved by the select board, details on the LEDs and lumens. And I will also request a dimmer or setting selection, the current type of internal illumination
One more thing, the LED streetlights that have been put in town six, seven years ago as an energy saving, those could be turned down. They don't have to be that same really white, bright color. They can go to a sort of a yellow, which is a softer color. And that was done in certain parts of the town because they wanted it to look more like a traditional New England town and not like the strip, the little Vegas strip. So there, I don't know whether, you know, to answer your question, that's an option or not for the LEDs, whether they actually do have a setting that you can set them down to more subtle color, subtle brightness and illumination. So, okay, well, anyway, I think there's a lot of questions that we may be getting ourselves into.
LEDs by their nature are dimmable. So I don't know if you'd be willing to add a dimmer? Have you talked to Mr. Dickinson about that?
That's the first I've heard of it, and I'm not sure I understood it fully. He said that he would.
He was just proposing that current type of internal illumination that have been included in current, oh, excuse me, I will just, I will include in the sign application, if approved by the select board, details on the LEDs and the lumens, and I will also request a dimmer or setting selection. So he's saying that if we approve this tonight, he's going to work further with you, find ways to control it that in case we find that, you know, you've put all this money and effort into doing a sign, and then we go, oh, my goodness, what do we do? He'll have some kind of way to tone it down.
Would we want that information prior to approving it, though?
Yeah, because you don't want to vote this, right?
It just seems, it seems backwards to me.
I want to make sure it can be done before we.
Right, before we would just go ahead and approve it, you know? See what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, can we ask staff to take a look at this particular technology to see whether it has that capability?
Yeah, so if I might try to reframe the question, so going on what Chair Taylor is suggesting, can we ask staff to set specific standards for lumens and brightness that can be written into the approval? So as opposed to approving it and then having staff work with the applicant on something that staff deems, you know, appropriate, is, can it be quantified in advance so that the board is approving something with a specific lumen and maybe, I don't know, maybe.
But there also has to be a method to be able to adjust to those standards.
Right.
That's what we're looking for as well, right?
We could also, if the dimming is not appropriate, or not possible, or not practical for some reason, we could look around at other signs and get some research from the Lawrence and Lynch sign, because I find that to be, you know, unobtrusive, and it's well-lit, and it does a nice job, it's not distracting, but it's attractive. But I think, you know, these things are certainly viable going forward, but I just think that we should, and I give Mr. Dickinson credit for having the foresight to say that he will put this in the application, so he's already thinking it through, and I don't think that we're going to guess the right number of lumens.
No.
Because it will be precedent setting.
Right. So I think his point about, you know, putting it into the application and making it dimmable or some sort of adjustment as we go, I guess there's two ways to do it. You can either figure out the lumens, match what Lawrence and Lynch has done, if you guys want to take more time to look at that and think about it, or.
And you've got a sign up now that's already lit externally, so it's not, you're not without sign right now, without signage, right?
Yes, sir.
What's the board's pleasure?
Would be appropriate, huh?
I would trust Mr. Dickinson, seeing how he's already been so thoughtful, but if you guys want to see what he's going to propose first, then certainly reasonable.
My only hesitation in leaning on Mr. Dickinson is, you know, I don't know that he knows, for example, how many lumens are in the Lawrence Lynch sign or various other signs that might be deemed acceptable, so I'm just, I don't have a good grasp on just how much research we're asking him to do.
There may be a conversation between you two to identify that prior to going forward either way would be appropriate, right?
I'm thinking that prior to approval by the select board, I'd love to see the details on the LEDs and the lumens.
Maybe he already has it based on what he's saying here.
Exactly, that's what I'm wondering. I wonder if he already does have some of this, thinking that we're going to approve it, but I would like to see that information and also see about the dimmer and the setting selections prior to approving.
I know that it's even possible.
Right.
I would support that as well.
Let me say, one thing about the Lawrence Lynch sign, and I have seen it many times going by, but there's relatively small parts that really give off light, you know, it's, it only has certain letters that are lit up or outlines of letters that are lit up. So that's part of it as well. I mean, if the whole thing were a big LCD displays and it was really bright, that's a lot different than the subtle outline of letters. So there, I think there's more to this, and it's not as simple. So, anyway, but that's a tough one for me to figure out on the spot, how to, how we could start.
And this sign is significantly different because the letters are large and all illuminated, so.
That was my question, is the sign, the Cape Cod Church lit fully, that's all in white, so that's where the light would come through?
Yes.
And then the rest of it would be blacked out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What lends me to think this is a perfect opportunity to investigate this is there are no abutters, there is no one across the street, it's just traffic that we need to be concerned with at this point.
Right.
Not somebody complaining that this sign is lighting up my yard. There is nothing next to them, and nothing across from them but the fairgrounds, which is empty. That's why I thought it was a prime opportunity, and being that if it wasn't them, it's going to be somebody else in the future that comes forward with this.
You know, maybe if you just ask Locust Street Sign, they'll tell us what the standard is and what everyone does, and if they all do 2,000 or, you know, whatever it is the measurement is, maybe we'll feel a little better about it then.
Because we don't know.
We don't know.
So you mind doing that little bit more research with the Locust Street Sign?
No, I'd be happy to talk to Mike and have him talk to you about that.
That would be great.
Should that be done?
With Jonathan.
Another selectman's meeting, or in writing passed through to you?
I think it would be in writing, it would come, and then it would come in front of the board again, but we would have more information to base a decision on.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is the board wants a recommendation from Jonathan.
Yes.
That has more details in it, and I think it would be very helpful for you to have a conversation with Mike and then have a conversation with Jonathan, and, you know, Mike has done a lot of signs in town, he can probably say, you know, do you want it to look like this sign or that sign, you know, what's the brightness level?
Nail it down.
Yeah, and then have some specifics that Jonathan is willing to bring forward as a recommendation to the board.
And we'll get a little list of what the parameters are for a properly lit sign, and that will maybe become our standard to go by.
A great start, wouldn't it?
I think it is a great start.
Okay. Sorry for the extra trip.
That's all right, thank you.
Pretty productive.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda, and I'm just going to start by saying that under administrative orders, A, vote to approve motions submitted by the 300 Committee on the request from the 300 Committee for Conservation Restriction for the Ed Brown Ledger 3.2, 72 acre property at Zero Boxbury Hill Road is going to be held. It was asked that we take it off our consent agenda tonight, for tonight.
At the request of the applicant?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. So I will read the other orders and committee appointments, and please notify the chair if there are any pieces that you would like to hold. Vote to accept FY 2022 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Award in the amount of $6,525. Initiate naming process to dedicate the beach side of the Monont Bridge to Bruce G. Magardo. Authorize letter to Eversource in opposition to herbicide spraying for vegetation management. Set date for the April 2023 town meeting.
I have a question on that one.
Yeah, what's there? Is there a date? Yeah, I agree.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to hold that one. Committee appointments, Veterans Council Committee, William Doherty, AmVets Post 70 Representative, and Veterans Council Committee, Ronald Nasef, DAV Representative.
I'd like to hold that one.
Okay, so we've got two to go back to. First one, set date for the April 2023 town meeting. In your packets, take a look at your April calendar, please. And I believe Mr. Patterson had a question.
Well, that's a tough one because of the Easter-related holidays, Passover, but it seems to me that holding it early, and then, by the way, then we run into school vacation if we wait until after the middle of April, so it seems to me April the 3rd, and if it's long, you know, it's two or three days, it would spill over into the Passover, but that's, that's the beginning of a religious period, so I'm not sure that's as critical a holiday for religious purposes as others might be. So I, I mean, my initial thought was April 3rd, and then, yes, we have had town meetings where we actually skipped a day and came back, although that's not desirable. But I think spring town meeting tends to be longer than fall town meeting.
Mr. Johnson stopped, do you want to address that?
So, I'm no expert in Jewish holidays, but I do believe that the first night of Passover is pretty significant. So, you know, certainly the, you know, we could start on the 3rd with the idea that after, if it goes to three nights, then it would go to the 10th, you'd go to the next week, could be one option. Or you could start on the 10th, which was, which was my initial thought, because it's after Easter, there's no Easter preparation that it interferes with, and it gives you the full week.
I would prefer the 10th if there's not some other reason.
I would as well.
Sounds good to me, too.
Okay, so do we have any, any other reason to hold that?
Well, I guess the only question, there are some times, if there's a referendum that comes up in, at the May town vote, there's a submission period that has to take place, there's a certain time period. I remember that from past years. It seems to me that the 10th is still early enough, that it shouldn't be a problem, but if we need to come back and reconsider it, let's just at least check and see if we can anticipate that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'll run those dates with the, with the town clerk and see what that looks like.
I don't know why my phone is telling me that Monday, April 10th, is Easter Monday. Is there some?
It is, there is an Easter Monday.
Easter Monday.
Continues. So are we then impeding on?
I don't, I don't believe so, because I'm not sure who celebrates the Easter Monday.
Yeah.
I want to say it's Canadian, but I'm not sure.
The holidays fall on the weekend, the Monday after is taken off?
Oh, right.
And that could be.
It could be.
It's not a state holiday, that often comes up with the state holiday, where you've got a Monday holiday after the Sunday, that's not the case for Easter.
Easter's Easter Sunday.
So I think we'll, I think we're going to hold 1E, and we'll bring it back to the board before we decide on.
Are there any referendums that would be expected to fall in May? I think so, right? There are overrides?
Possibly.
Yeah, so that would be the issue then, do we have the legal notification period, I think?
Yeah, so the issue comes up only if there's going to be a change. So if you know you've got town meeting on one day and a debt exemption, let's say, as part of the town election in May, you could have one week in between and you're fine. The only, the only issue where it comes up is if, based on the town meeting vote, you want to change what's on the election ballot, that's where this distance between those two votes becomes important.
And do we need to announce the April town meeting date at the November town meeting?
Yes, you do.
So we don't have another meeting?
You have just the meeting, the night of town meeting.
Right, so that will be the day that we'll have to decide on, you know, the board will have to vote at that point?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Because that's the only time that we're going to have.
So were we thinking the 10th, and then we'll verify that before town meeting? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, either way, so if you were to start on the 3rd, and it goes for three nights, you know, then you're faced with the choice of either, you know, you have it on Passover, or you're deferring to the 10th anyway.
Right, so I'm, that's why I'm suggesting that the 10th, but for some reason we need to clarify that, I guess.
And we'll vote it at our pre-meeting before town meeting.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll hold that one. Okay, and then I heard that we're holding the Veterans Council Committee on Ronald Nasef, DAV Representative.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm uncomfortable with the vote tonight for myself, I do some things I would have to look into before making a vote to affirm. So if the rest of the board chooses to vote, then I would want to, you know, call a vote on it.
Yeah, I asked also to hold this one because I have concerns about this particular applicant and some things that, information that was given to me and that I found online, and we did receive an email from Ronald Nasef about those, and I didn't feel that was satisfactory to make me feel differently about what I had read and what I had heard. Those are my concerns.
If I could just clarify, I believe Ms. Scott Price is referring to a hand-delivered letter that was emailed to the board.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
That's been verified as public.
It was submitted by Mr. Nasef.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So we need to vote on all the other items?
We can, but we'll, I think we can finish, maybe finish this conversation to see if, what is the, what is the will of the board, and have, has the board shown cause to, depending on how we move?
Right, so the chair is referring to, if the board chooses not to appoint the nominee of the disabled American veterans, then you would need to specify what that good cause is to not appoint that individual.
Okay. Well, I haven't seen that good cause yet personally, but if you want to take more time to investigate it, I'd certainly be willing to defer to another meeting and see if there's more information that could be, that'd be appropriate.
Sure, you know.
To hold the nominee, the affirmation?
I would just say there's no time pressure specifically to vote tonight if the board, you know, is aware of either information or believes that, you know, has reason to believe, if you have reason to believe that you can get more information, that you will need to make a decision, then it's certainly appropriate to defer action.
Well, we just got this pretty late, so I, for one, would like to be able to find if there's any more public information out there to help me come up with a personal decision on this myself, and how the rest of the board feels, but I think in all fairness to the applicant and the board making the affirmation, I think that would be appropriate, Madam Chair.
Okay, so do I have a motion to hold this, this vote until another time?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor to hold this appointment?
For further information?
Yes.
I would agree.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, so let's go back to the consent agenda, taking into account that 1A has been taken off until a later time, and we have also moved to hold the appointment of Ronald Nasef to our Veterans Council Committee. I'll entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Second.
Did you have a question?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Town manager supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to begin with, I want to just mention that the bid for the construction of the new fire station on Sandwich Road will be advertised this week. Filed sub-bids are due November 30th. General bids are due December 14th. The building committee has worked with the owner's project manager and architect to bring the specifications in line with the budget based on professional estimated cost of construction. I would note the bidding environment continues to be highly volatile, so despite having very sound professional support and a highly qualified building committee, there is a greater than normal chance that bids could come in over budget, but we'll stay tuned and see how that plays out. Good to see it moving forward, though. Also, I want to provide an update with respect to a license that was awarded by the select board to Richard Bowen of 102 Grand Ave. You recall that was a license to allow a parking spot to be constructed within the town right-of-way, and subsequently it became known to us that the construction that was completed after the board awarded that license resulted in some non-compliance with the owner's special permit from the zoning board of the fields. So it wasn't the parking space, it wasn't the licensed parking space that the board voted per se, but the construction that was done in connection with that shortly after the license agreement was awarded did cause multiple conflicts with the property owner's special permit. So the building commissioner and the DPW department followed up on those non-compliance issues. Mr. Bowen has retained legal counsel and is, we are told, that the, Mr. Bowen is working with his representatives to submit an application to ZBA to address those non-compliance issues, and I have made it known to the, to Mr. Bowen that, you know, one of the possibilities if those non-compliance issues are not addressed in a reasonably timely fashion is that it could cause this board to reconsider the license agreement. So that's where we stand on that matter. Just a couple of staffing updates, a local building inspector has been hired, and that is, brings us to a point where we have very rarely been in the last five-plus years, which is that all of the inspector positions are filled. So the commissioner, the full-time local inspectors, part-time local inspectors, electrical, all of them are filled, which is wonderful. We are still short, as it happens, a part-time administrative clerk in the, in the building office. Actually, is it, I'm not sure, it might even be a full-time administrative position in the building office that they are seeking to fill now. And recently, unfortunately, a part-time administrative clerk in the accounting office has resigned, that individual is moving out of state.
May I just make one quick comment about the building department? I have had several really good comments, I've received several really, really good comments about the building department and how they're working with local contractors, and they're, they're very appreciative. So I think it's important to say that.
Well, I appreciate that very much.
It's a 180 from a couple of years ago when we were faced with some real challenges, and I've also been hearing good, positive comments as well.
That is great to hear, and I will definitely pass that on to Building Commissioner Gary Street and the staff. Thank you.
Kudos to the commissioner and his department.
Yes.
So your next meetings, as you know, you have town meeting on the 14th, there is a, there will be a meeting posted for 6:30 for that night to address the date of the April town meeting and any other matters that may arise with respect to town meeting itself. Town meeting starts at 7 o'clock at the Lawrence School, as you know. Then we have a regular board meeting November 21st, December 5th, December 19th, which will be my budget presentation, and then on January 7th, that's a Saturday, and the chair has asked to hold a workshop meeting to have an in-depth budget workshop and invite the finance committee chair and vice chair to have a dialogue with the board about the FY '24 budget. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I will be attending precinct four and seven, and also precinct five and six meeting.
I'll see you at four.
And I'll be at three, I think I signed up for three for next week, one and three.
I'd like to thank, sorry.
Yes.
Slide board reports. Oh, I was going to say, I'd like to thank Mr. Zalinski for filling in for me when I couldn't make it to the precinct nine meeting.
Somebody has to hold Mr. Neto down, I figured it would be me.
Well, Nancy and I both attended the precinct one and two meeting, which was held on the 3rd, was it, November 3rd, November 4th?
Yes.
Yeah, and it was pretty straightforward, you know, it is a short warrant, so there wasn't a lot of complexity for people to get hung up on, pretty efficiently done, so that one is out of the way.
So I attended a video conference with a gentleman named David Chavez, and he is promoting these sport courts, and I was very interested in it. It's a possible opportunity to put an exercise court, it's 38 feet by 38 feet, and there's currently a $50,000 grant opportunity to offset the potential cost, which could be $150,000 or $170,000, and then there's also an opportunity to add a second 38 by 38 for like a yoga. So the 138 by 38 court has exercise equipment, you know, pulling straps and those little things that you step up on to do stretching exercises and so forth, and then, so I forwarded that to the recreation director and the chair of the committee for their consideration, so we'll see if there's any interest on their part. And on Friday, I attended a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce to meet with Brian Switzer and a couple other housing advocates about potentially making a video of the snapshot of housing in Falmouth and what we're faced with right now, and just kind of update the public on what's going on and what can be done, what is being done and what needs to be done, maybe, it's not yet framed as to what it's going to be, but just another thing to get the word out about the situation that we're in right now.
Any other reports, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I do, but I'll defer to Angie if she wants to report on this housing summit that was held on Thursday last week. Do you want to kick it off, or?
Sure, the Housing to Protect Cape Cod, it was encouraging that there was over 400 people there. There was a lot of good leadership, the director of USGS in Woods Hole was there, the COO of MBL, the executive, something to the president from Hui, and the director of HR from Woodwell. So there was a lot of representation from the leadership in Woods Hole institution specifically, and then Sam and I were there, Kim Fish was there, Carrie from Affordable Housing Committee, Hack hosted it, along with some other organizations, it was, so it was very well-attended. It was, it was very depressing in many ways, to be honest, talking about the state of housing and trends, and talking about numbers, and there was some exercises where we had to stand up and consider all people in the room and multiply that by large sums of numbers to represent the people who have been displaced on the Cape. So there were things like that to really put it in perspective for people, really hit home. And there was some discussions about solutions, there was a lot of encouragement of people to get involved locally on zoning boards, at town meeting, to get the things that we want changed, talk about multifamily zoning came up quite a few times. I'm thinking, you know, outside of the box and home shares, and there was a lot of really good information. I have my notes that I plan to share with the Affordable Housing Committee, but like I said, Carrie was there as well. Yeah, it was, it was good, but it was, it was also a little bit tough to sit through.
Yeah, I could just name a couple of things that came up that really rang my bell, so to speak. A thousand families have left Cape Cod for other places, and their houses have basically been purchased by affluent people who are Airbnb-ing them. There's this huge conversion to short-term rental that's taking place. I know it's happening in my community because I've seen it, and I have the community directory, association directory, and I see these turnovers, and that is, it's really making it very difficult, and the result is, and this was another statistic that was presented by Tim Cornwell, who was from the Concord Group that kind of came to give us an assessment of where we stand as the Cape, but 50% of the people that we employ for services are coming from off Cape now. 50% of the employees that are used, you know, that come to Cape Cod for work can't make enough money on Cape Cod to live on Cape Cod. They have to, and then there's a big transportation cost that comes along that obviously decreases their, their compensation to pay for the gasoline, and we know what's happening with fuel prices. So a big, big kind of wake-up calls, I think, no answers, you know, I mean, other than trying to take advantage of increased density where it's appropriate, where there are, where there's the infrastructure to handle it, sewage treatment, for instance, is the big thing, because obviously Cape Cod is dealing with, you know, tremendous nitrogen pollution of our estuaries, and so how do we balance all this and be equitable and fair? It really is an issue that's complex, that has to be struggled with, and. It really is an issue that's complex, that has to be struggled with, and nobody's got any answers. I know Wayne Lingefelder is taking a look at how you can restrain properties, if there's, maybe if there's any kind of subsidy that they can't be used for short-term rental after that. They have to be for year-round residential use. But that gets into property rights issues, which can't be dealt with at the local level. That's going to have to be a state-level type of thing. But I think, you know, there's, it's, it's becoming a big issue. I don't think it's unique to Cape Cod. We hear about it all up and down the East Coast, but I think it's worse here, because people can purchase homes, not for year-round residence, but for air, for short-term rental, and then come here for a couple of weeks several times throughout the year, and enjoy it as a sort of a vacation home in addition to a business investment. So, big economic dynamic that's going on, and it's, I think it's been here for the 30, all for the entire 30 years I've lived here, but it's on steroids now. And I, and I guess probably because the internet, that makes it so easy for people to Airbnb, where it used to be you'd have to use a local Realtor to basically agent your, your property for you, and it just gets a little bit more complicated, and the ease with which people can identify an available property if they want to rent something is made much easier because of the Airbnb, you know, internet kind of accessibility. So, anyway.
Just a little bit of a follow-up to that. Housing to Protect Cape Cod, who's the organization that put this on, they did have a couple potential opportunities to help communities. They do a lot of advocacy training, so there was an advocacy training that afternoon. I didn't attend that, I went to lunch with Alisa and some other members from Hack and other organizations. They do offer what they call a town huddle, which has been basically helping to facilitate a conversation within the town about opportunities. And they also can review and write bylaws for us. So, if we ask them to come in, do a town huddle, they would do the legwork of writing new bylaws or reviewing our current bylaws, and then obviously we have to present that to town meeting and so on and so forth, but they offer those kinds of services. And somebody mentioned at some point 40Y, which is different from 40B and from 40R. It hasn't been voted on, and I didn't write down a lot of notes about it, because it was kind of just a fleeting thing, but something for us to pay attention to.
If I could follow up also on that. On November 18th, Friday morning, we're going to have another Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association meeting, and the subject of that is going to be two pronged, related to housing. One is, there's going to be a speaker from Bales, Colorado, explaining the deed restriction program that they have, where they're putting deed restrictions on houses. I don't know if they're going knocking on doors of older folks, or what it is they're doing, but they're going to share that with us on the 18th. We're also going to talk about if any towns are making any progress in researching what can be done to potentially put a moratorium on these short-term rentals, or any type of regulation that may be able to be applied. So, we're going to brainstorm what, if anybody has any ideas about how that can be implemented.
Julian Seer and Sarah Peake, two state representatives, one's a senator, one's a rep, were there at this meeting, and were certainly listening, and they're on, they're located on the outer Cape, but at least we know that the state delegation was there with their ears open, and they're, this is not new to them. So, because some of this is going to have to, a relaxation of regulations at the state level, and I, that's going to take a while.
And implementation of other regulations, potentially. There's a big public outcry now about the short-term rentals taking over the Cape, so I think it's going to move quickly.
I don't know. There's going to be a lot of legal challenges.
This is a two-part report. One that happened during the course of this meeting tonight, I had a minor epiphany as the meeting was, was developing tonight. We had, we had young professionals from Woods Hole pleading with us to help them find a way. And then a few hearings later, we saw how there would be a direct correlation to how it affects our children and grandchildren, because those people will no longer be able to work at Hui and have time to take our children there and recognize their culture and all of that. So, that was, that was a pretty powerful moment for me, just within this meeting with what we're all talking about. The encouraging part of my report was, I was at a bank this, this weekend, and I'll say her name out loud, a Mrs. Bowman approached me about wanting to serve the town. How do I go about it? So, with all of our, our issues that we deal with, there is still an outreach of people that really want to participate and help and solve problems. Just so happens, we have, she wanted to be on the SWAC, and I just found out tonight that there's an, there's an opportunity to put an application into them. So, if you're watching, there's your, there's your scoop. But it's very encouraging to go to these, these committee assignments, and, you know, when you're a brand-new member, you, it's like drinking out of a fire hose. But as you start to settle in, you start to see the genuine, the genuine intent and the real caring, and it's inspiring. There's a couple that I have, and I had to lose a little more weight before I get on a bike, but, for my committee assignment. But it is encouraging, and that is why these committee assignments are so important, to give us that perspective. And I appreciate the fact that I have six of them.
Thank you.
Just give you an example, just one last thing, it won't take long. And I did attend the Community Preservation Committee, and if you talk about a committee of dedicated people that are looking out for the town and trying to figure out how to enhance the town, that's a group that really fits right into that stereotype. But really, this town is, I've always been impressed with the number of citizens that volunteer their time and try to make a positive difference in the quality of life.
And take it so seriously.
And take, put the time and effort into it. Yes, I quite agree with you.
That's it for me, Madam.
All right, thank you. So, we'll move on to discussion of future agenda items. Anybody?
Well, that sign thing's going to come back on the agenda, isn't it?
Yes.
That's the next meeting, yeah. Or can we do?
As soon as we get the information.
As soon as you get, I guess it can't necessarily be at the next meeting.
Right, we have to wait until, but it will be a future agenda item. Anything, any other ideas for future agenda items?
We've already thrown a few out, and I think they're more, the ones I've been throwing out are more appropriate for that Saturday venue. That'll be after town meeting sometime, probably.
Okay.
And we're still going to be having a joint finance committee meeting sometime during the winter.
Well, we're, we're starting with the chair and the vice chair, and we're going to see where we go from there.
Okay.
That's the first step.
I don't have the timing on it, but I did talk to Peter about an update on this lift station for the sewer area, both for the Scranton out of the development, but also the Mr. Cod development along David Straits, because, you know, if this is a planning issue that we need to address, we ought to jump on it right away, because I don't think we should be holding up these projects, which are likely to deliver some affordable or accessible housing.
I'm not sure that we are.
So, so we don't have an agreement. That's, we're not holding up in that sense. But actually, the, if the agreement, so we're talking about for the public, we're talking about the Falmouth Plaza flow-neutral variance. So, the, we've been waiting to hear from the applicant's attorneys to see if we can work out an agreement to address this contingency, where, you know, the board is saying, if we can figure out how to get the added effluent flow from the Falmouth Plaza to the treatment plant, then the board, you know, at least this is the proposal we're bringing for your consideration, then the board can consider approving it. So, Madam Chair, you're absolutely right. The board's not holding that up at all. The town's not holding that up. But actually, we've already started, the wastewater superintendent, Amy Lowell, has already commissioned a study. This was back in August, and the results of that study are due in February. So, the very earliest, February's cutting it kind of close. We'd have to have a placeholder article in January and finalize the article in February for April town meeting action. That would be the very soonest that we could be funding any actual construction of improvements to figure out how to get more flow, not just from the Falmouth Plaza, but that area, you know, there's a, there's a vulnerability, if you will, a capacity limitation in the system at that lift station.
Didn't we, didn't we give her six months? Didn't we take a vote that night to give her six months to explore that?
Well, she asked us to delay our, our vote for six months, but we chose to show our support for the project by continuing to put it on our agenda every, every meeting. So, I mean, I think we've shown all the good faith we can.
I agree.
It's just, you know, I just, like I said, I wanted a progress report on how we're doing to address that issue, because holding up these projects is dollars, and we know what inflation is like right now. And so, it's costing the projects money the longer we push them out.
Okay.
I think just, just the fact that we're continuing to entertain it on the agenda every time we meet shows that we're very interested.
Oh, I don't, not for a moment, you're just asking for.
And we're hoping that we, we will hear back from the client's attorneys, because we have reached out, and we have some language. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome.